So I guess we'll call this meeting to order for November 9th. Committee of the Hall meeting. We'll start off by asking for any items to be added to the agenda. No, it's blinking lights now.
Hold on.
Is it working for you? I don't. No, it's not working. It's telling us to start vote. So it's not just me then? Can't work this thing? Yeah, it's not letting you respond to any.
It's on start vote. Why is it doing that?
So is this number two then?
Okay, so someone's on.
Okay.
Yep, it's over there.
Yeah, it doesn't reach, but that's all right.
Go ahead.
It's fine. We'll do this one. Just add the item to the agenda and then we'll adjust.
Okay.
I'd just like to add. I'd just like to see if we can add the, an update on the Richmond Arena.
Okay. So we would need unanimous approval for that. Counselors, you raise your hand if you approve. Okay, perfect. We'll add an update on Richmond Arena. Okay, any other items to add to the agenda? Yeah, so I have a couple of items to add as well. I'd like to add an acknowledgement for the Tree for Boston. If there's approval for that, can raise your hand. Thank you. And I'd also like to add an update on live streaming our meetings going forward. If you approve, can raise your hand. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other items to add to the agenda? Okay, so seeing that, we'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, Sean?
Yep, I put a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Diggden. So we'll, we have a motion to approve the agenda as on the table, so any discussion? Call for the question then? All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. All right. So our next item of business is review of the minutes from September 14th, 2020. Assuming that counselors have had an opportunity to review those minutes in the package that they were provided, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
I move that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as presented.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sampson. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second that, Amanda.
Thanks, Councilor Diggden. So we have a motion on the table to approve the, the minutes from September 14th. Any discussion on that? Nope. Okay, so hearing none, I'll call for the question.
Question?
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. So I think our first, next item of business is related to the Eastern District Planning Commission regarding a demolition order. So I'll ask a representative to provide an update on the property. Okay, welcome. So you're on. If you could introduce yourself and just, yeah, provide us a date. Thank you.
Okay. My name is John Martin. I'm a building inspector with the Eastern District Planning Commission, and I also handle the dangerous and unsightly complaints, or among others. So this is a, an update for a property that we believe should be demolished, and we have tried to have that happen by cooperation with the property owner, but are unsuccessful so far, so we will be making a recommendation this evening for council to order that demolition. And if approved, we would then circulate it for signatures and then post the property, and they would have 30 days. So this is the property in question. It's 121 Shore Road. So on November 2nd, we, actually, this isn't the full history, but we've had some, we've had some back and forth with the property owner. Andre Sampson, our assistant building official who works over there, has been primarily handling this file. He has been back and forth with the owners and did an inspection. This is the property, the trailer behind the red SUV there. This is one photo. So the building is ready to collapse. I believe in the, one of the more recent storms, there was further damage as well to the building. So it is in a, in a state of disrepair. I can go back to those photos if you'd like to see them after, but so as far as the dangerous and unsightly premises definitions from the Municipal Government Act, the building is certainly in a ruinous, dilapidated condition. We believe it's in a state of non-repair to be no longer suitable for human habitation, and it's currently uninhabited. It's on the same property as another dwelling that is inhabited. And it's definitely unsightly in relation to neighboring properties and due to structural issues as well. So there's siding and framing issues. The roof is partially collapsed. There's, there's not much that could be done to save it if there was even motivation to save it, and there doesn't appear to be. So if the owners did, we would definitely need an engineer to oversee that process. So for our recommendation, it meets the definition as defined in the Municipal Government Act of dangerous and unsightly. So it's our recommendation that in order to remedy the condition be issued by council, that be a demolition order, and we would give them 30 days to do it themselves, and if they didn't, we would then tender the demolition, and the costs would be recovered on a tax bill. And there appears, there, the order was, or the notice going back was hand-delivered by, on November 2nd. And they, this sort of sentiment seemed to be, oh, great, the county wants to clean it up kind of thing, that there wasn't, they were happy to see that happen and, and would pay the bill. So sometimes in these cases, there's a question as to whether or not the municipality will be able to recover the costs of the demolition, and we believe they will be in this case, but we can never be sure. So that's our recommendation. Typically, there's time given for the property owner to speak on behalf of the property if they're here. I'm not sure.
Yes, that's right. So any discussion, I guess, before we get to that item on the agenda? Go ahead, Councilor Sampson.
Yeah, I did get a chance to speak to the property owner over the weekend. I was informed it was due to be taken down this week. He had made arrangements with a contractor to remove it, so he wasn't planning appearing tonight because he said, you can let them know, I have every intention to get it done this week. It's already been set up. I'm not sure if, that being said, seeing as we weren't involved in this in the past, if it would make sense to, if anyone thought it would make sense to table this to the next meeting later in the month, and if nothing was done by then, then issue the order then? Or is it, is it more of a waste of time for you guys to issue it if it's being done shortly? Although I'm sure you've heard these stories before.
Yeah.
However, I know the person personally, and he assured me yesterday that it would be done shortly. Arrangements had already been made.
Right. No, it's not about being a waste of time for us by any stretch. We're, we're happy to work with people, and we, we like to do that. The thing is, if we, if council issues the order tonight, there's a 30-day period for him to do it anyway, and then if he does it, we just close the file, and that's great, right? Whereas if it drags on, then we issue the order, then there's 30 days. That's my only thought, but I'm, we're happy with whatever council decides.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess, John, you've been around this long enough. I would, I would recommend that we proceed with the order tonight. As Brent said, he's already talked to the gentleman, and he plans on cleaning it up this week. If it doesn't get done this week, he still has three more weeks prior to, I guess, the municipality engaging. So I would make a recommendation that we proceed with the order, and therefore, as long as he has given the 30 days, then I don't see an issue.
And so, and just to clarify, if, if the order is given this evening and the constituent does remove the building, you just close the file. There's no further action. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Councilor Sampson?
Are there any negative impacts to the landowner if the order is issued against it? Is it something that's registered? Like, I'm just not familiar with them. So, you know, as, as Warden Memberkett asked, is it just a matter of, the file is opened, he shows that he demolishes the, you know, removes the property, and then it's removed, and really goes no further than where we are here, and then with EDPC? Is that accurate?
Yeah, the demolition order is just really what enables us to clean it up if there's an unwilling, so that we can't just go taking, you know, tearing down buildings. We have to order it. So when they, yeah, really, like, if, if it was, if we ordered it, and it'll take a few days to get the paperwork signed and everything, and then he may, but yeah, really, no, like, it goes no, really no further than our files, and as soon as it's cleaned up and we have a picture of the clean site, we just close the file and move on to the next one.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Martin? All right. So I guess we are entertaining a motion to proceed with the demolition order. Is there someone who would like to make that motion? Go ahead.
I, I move that we proceed with the demolition order, under the understanding that the gentleman has given the 30 days as written, and is, you know, aware that within 30 days or after 30 days that the county will be proceeding to clean it up.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Diggden. We have a motion to approve the demolition order according to the recommendation by the administrator. So is there a second on that motion? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I would second that motion.
All right. Thanks, Councilor Sampson. So any other further discussion? All right. So call for the question then? Okay. So all those in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. And those opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carried. Thank you so much, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So I think the next item of business is that we have some presentations from Cape Breton University. We're pleased to welcome President David Dingwall to talk to us about the future of CBU with some of his colleagues. So welcome to Council Chambers. You're our first presentation of our first-ever Committee of the Hall. We're excited to have you here.
I have to push a button here?
You do, yes. There's a, there's a red button? Is that what color it is on those? Yeah. Okay, there you go. Your mic should be active.
Well, thank you very much, and I guess I should begin by congratulating you and your new responsibilities here in Richmond, as well as all of the members of council. You have important responsibilities, and I'm sure that you will conduct them with the great deal of professionalism that you know needs to be attached to these kinds of issues. And as they say in show, show business, go ahead, break a leg. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Under normal circumstances, Madam Chairperson, the university would be here with various pieces of, I wouldn't call them gifts, but trinkets from the university, but because of COVID-19, it makes it very difficult, so you'll all be receiving some items in the mail in the not-too-distant future, pending, of course, what the mail does. I'd like to introduce my colleagues that are with me from the Department of Development is Steve Horn, and to my left is the Vice President of Finance at Cape Breton University, who has a long and distinguished career. As a young man, he did the audit here at Richmond County. So I, I say to the chief administrative officer, if there's any problems, he's the guy to blame. So thank you very much. I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can, and no doubt, you will have the big stick, and you will ask me to, to refrain. But on October the 23rd, 2020, the Board of Governors at Cape Breton University passed a unanimous resolution in support of the Center for Discovery and Innovation. Do we have the?
It's coming up.
It's coming up. There it is. Very slow. There it is. This project is in total alignment with our strategic plan that we work very diligently on, as well as our research plan and our academic plan. This is a strategic decision for the university. It's a decision which will engage our customers, which is essentially students, local students, domestic students from across Canada, and indeed, international students. This new facility will strengthen the core of the offerings at Cape Breton University, and it will exhilarate the growth in the municipalities throughout the island of Cape Breton. I think the need for this Center for Discovery and Innovation, in my estimation, is overwhelming. The facility is, the old facility is 53,000 square feet. It's approximately 50 years old. It's full of asbestos. I don't want to scare you, but students still enter the building because we adhere to many, many, many protocols in terms of protecting them from asbestos. And the faculty and the staff realize that with this kind of antiquated facility, it's very difficult in terms of the modernization of what students wish to have going forward. So the question I have is what value would a new Center for Discovery and Innovation bring to the university and bring to the community? This facility would bring a lot of benefits to the university and to the community. But before I talk about that, let's talk about the present. We've created 169 new jobs at Cape Breton University with the influx of international students. We pay in excess of $11.2 million in taxes to the provincial government. We provide $165 million in economic activity here in Cape Breton. There are many facilities in the urban parts of Cape Breton who have benefited. In fact, there are many businesses in Richmond County and throughout the other counties who have benefited from international students. During the summer months before COVID, last year, we distributed some 165 students to various operators throughout the counties here in Cape Breton. The Leesburg Seafoods is one that comes to mind, Premium Seafoods, not the one that bought Clearwater, but the other one. And of course, that has generated some substantial economic revenue here in Cape Breton. But there's a bigger issue that I, I need to share with you, and that is the issue of learning this technology. I want to talk about this population. For 41, 43 years, from 1971 to 2014, the population growth in Canada was the following. British Columbia, 107%, doubled. Alberta, 147. Ontario, 74%. Quebec, 34. PEI, 29. And Nova Scotia, 18.2. If we're going to grow as an island, the four counties have to have some measure of population growth. We can't point the finger at others and say, well, you know, it's your fault. It's our fault. We need to work collectively together in terms of trying to grow the population here in Cape Breton. The 18.2% over a 43-year period in Nova Scotia is rather staggering. If you looked at the census districts in the province of Nova Scotia, there's 18. Only two of them had a growth. One was Halifax, I think it was 2.1. The second one was either the Annapolis Valley or Kings, which was 0.1. All other municipal units across the province saw a decrease. The four counties here in Cape Breton, Richmond County being one, Inverness, Victoria, and Cape Breton Regional Municipality, all decreased substantially. That needs to be of great concern to all of us. So in my preparation for coming here and speaking to other groups, we did a little bit of homework. The CBRM had done some extensive research into the population, which I think you might want to take a look at. You probably have your own studies. But it showed that the four municipalities in Cape Breton were on a massive decline. It's not me. It's the studies. A massive decline. And that's very troubling. You're not going to have the schools, you're not going to have the services, the taxes are going to go up, and business will flee because services are not here. A substantial thing for us to give consideration to. As a result, I went to PEI. I met with former Premier of the Province of PEI, Wade McLaughlin, who, very bright man, likes to tell you that too. And I came with my questions and knew what the answers were going to be, but I had to ask him. I said, "Premier?" "No, no, call me. Call me Wade," which was kind of nice as we drank coffee. I said, "What did you do differently in PEI that we didn't do in Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, and Newfoundland?" He said, "We embarked upon a population strategy." And that population strategy had three buckets. One was domestic migration, people from around the country coming back home. The second one was immigration. The third one was international students and the retention of international students. So what were the results in PEI versus that of Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, and Newfoundland? In PEI, they increased their population by 13,500. Nova Scotia continued to decline, with the exception of those two census districts. New Brunswick was declining, and Newfoundland was declining. That is a substantial piece of growth in the province of Prince Edward Island. And he also said, "Look, you know, in Prince Edward Island, the GDP was the best in the country. The worst in the country was Nova Scotia." I think New Brunswick was the second worst, and Newfoundland was the third. So there was a real benefit in terms of a population strategy. You now see, in 2020, New Brunswick is pursuing that. Nova Scotia is on that way, although they haven't announced it officially, but they're moving in that direction. And Newfoundland has announced that as well, that they're moving towards a population strategy. So we believe that to be very significant for our municipal units. What will be required, Madam Chair, is for the university, and yourselves, and other municipal units, to work more cooperatively and collaboratively as we try to have more people reside in our communities. It's not going to be easy, but I think we need to put our shoulder to the wheel and say, "Hey, what are some of the best practices that we can adopt for the purposes of our population growth?" Now, here's what's happened in the CBRM. Since 1961, for over fif, close to 50 years, the CBRM has never had a population below 100,000. It is now below 100,000 and dropping like a rock, if you look at this particular graph. We changed it in 2019. Why? The university had 3,200 students in 2018. In 2019, we went to 6,050. We attract international students from over 56 different countries around the world. And with a worldwide COVID pandemic, this year, we have online 5,000 students. 75% of the international students who come to this island want to stay. We think that's significant, and we need to take advantage of those opportunities. So why would they want to come to Cape Breton? What are some of the strategic advantages that we have on the island that perhaps others don't have? Well, you have it in spades in Richmond County, which I represented it for many years in the Parliament of Canada, but you are a welcoming community. That is a significant strategic advantage. Do not underplay it, just as Inverness, Victoria, and the CBRM. We're also number one island in North America, but we don't talk about it. We let, let some tourist operators talk about it, but we never talk about it. Must be embarrassed. Can't talk about that. That's good news. My dear friend, the former governor of Michigan, Jim Blanchard, and I won't use the language because I think we're on television, but he did tell me, he said, "Dingwall, you're crazy. Could you imagine if we had an island in Michigan, what we would do with that, not only from a tourism point of view, but also through an economic development point of view? Significant." Third strategic advantage is our environment, the pristine nature of the Bedore Lakes, which is the geographical center of Cape Breton Island. People from all over the world Google that on a regular basis, particularly when they reference CBU and other parts of Cape Breton. We at CBU, like, unlike others, we have a very, very high-quality, competitively-priced educational product. Now, I'm saying Vincent, I think, has a, what, a $60 or $75 lower than we are. Newfoundland is a little bit cheaper because the state pays for it all, but we're a pretty competitive-priced product in terms of an educational degree. Another thing that you have in Richmond County, elsewhere in Cape Breton as well, that we never want to talk about. We let some tourist operators talk about it, but we never talk about it. Must be embarrassed. Can't talk about that, that's good news. My dear friend, the former governor of Michigan, Jim Blanchard, and I won't use the language because I think we're on television, but he did tell me, he said, "Dingwall, you're crazy. Could you imagine if we had an island in Michigan, what we would do with that? Not only from a tourism point of view, but also through an economic development point of view? Significant." Third strategic advantage is our environment, the pristine nature of the Bedore Lakes, which is the geographical center of Cape Breton Island. People from all over the world Google that on a regular basis, particularly when they reference CBU and other parts of Cape Breton. We at CBU, like, unlike others, we have a very, very high-quality, competitively-priced educational product. Now, St. Vincent, I think, has a, what, a sixty or seventy-five dollars lower than we are, Newfoundland is a little bit cheaper because the state pays for it all, but we're a pretty competitive-priced product in terms of an educational degree. Another thing that you have in Richmond County, elsewhere in Cape Breton as well, that we never want to talk about, is a relatively low crime rate. And you may say, "Well, what significance does that have?" Well, let me tell you. When you're in the capitals of India, in China, in Thailand, in Vietnam, in Europe, the hand goes up, and it's usually women who ask the question. "Sir, you made a very nice presentation, but may I ask you a question?" "Yes, please." "Is it safe in Cape Breton? Will my daughter be okay? Will she be open to physical abuse?" Most of us don't think of that. But when you're in a faraway land, that happens. It's a serious strategic advantage for the island to be promoting, as far as the university is concerned. We have, at the university, a capacity to develop partnerships. We have over two hundred different MOUs and arrangements around the world. We have a partnership with the Canadian Coast Guard. We have a partnership with the Nova Scotia Community College, dozens of nonprofit organizations, as well as many, many, many private sector operations. And finally, and I could give you more strategic advantages, but let me close with this one. And I thank the elected representatives in Nova Scotia for this one. I think it's important for them to get the credit when the credit is due. But you have to admit, in Richmond County, that one of the safest places in the Western world with COVID-19 is in Cape Breton. And if you don't think that I'm going to promote that in my international travels, which you should be promoting as well, because people can relocate back here, they can work from here, conduct their businesses, and be in a safe, healthy environment as we go forward, that is very significant. Now, I think my time is just about up. There may be a few questions. But just to repeat, number one is that there is a need for this new facility. It is important to the university and the offerings that you give to students. The second advantage is there's a community-wide advantage. I don't know of any other business in Cape Breton that created a hundred and sixty-nine jobs. I don't know any other business that has a hundred and sixty-five million-dollar footprint economically each and every year in Cape Breton. And on the population, I want you to read this as my, part of my closing remarks. And with your permission, I'll read it out loud. "The latest Stats Canada numbers show the university students had a significant impact, most notably in the CBRM. There was an increase of two thousand two hundred and forty-nine in net non-permanent residents in the CBRM. And just to put that into context, the increase in Halifax was one thousand four hundred and eighty-one. So it's a very large jump. That's how much this means to the overall population in Cape Breton that's actually pushing the population up. I think the task for us is to work with you, your committees, other committees, on domestic migration, on international immigration, and international students that come to Cape Breton."
Well, thank you very much for that compelling presentation, President Dingwall. I appreciate it. I think all of us appreciate your comments and agree with, you know, much of the statistics you're presenting, or we're not strangers to it, but it's certainly interesting to see the impact of the international student population on the Cape Breton population numbers, you know, it's pretty impressive. So, are there any questions from council or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, for me, Dave, when you talked domestic migration with Wade, did he tell you how or what brought the population back, or how he focused on bringing the population back to PEI?
Yes, they did many things. First thing that they did is that they worked with their municipal units across the island. It wasn't all segregated in Charlestown, which many people thought it would. But there was great population gains right across the province, farmers, fishermen, what have you, filled different positions, great opportunities in the tourism sector. Just to give you an idea, in Cape Breton, there's five thousand four hundred and sixty-five people that work in the tourism sector in Cape Breton Island. Many of those are a little older in the tooth.
Oh, you just turned it off there, Dave. Yeah, just try that. There we go. Nope. Maybe try press one more. There you go. There you go.
But there's over five thousand four hundred people working in the tourism sector. A good number of them are getting up in years, and they'd like to sell their business, they'd like to pass it on to their business. And, you know, we took people from a number of our international students here to Richmond, to Victoria County, to Inverness, and other parts of the CBRM. But a hundred and sixty-five students were given some advantages in terms of employment. So it was the cooperation, it was the identifying of opportunities and getting bodies in front of those potential employers, whether they were private sector employers or a combination of nonprofit organizations that needed new employees. Our population is aging. And a good number of these young students, they want to have an opportunity to have an internship, to have a co-op, to get an opportunity for a full-time job. Protocase in Sydney is roughly twenty-five full-time persons now. Kennedy's Seafoods in Leesburg, I think they're up to twenty-six. John Bragg in, the Blueberry Guy picked up eighteen full-time. I know Edgar Sampson in Premium Seafood has a number working there. So putting people before the opportunities. And this continuing, 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 working together, pressing, 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 pitching, pressing, that will get us a long way.
Any other comments, questions? All right, well, I think that wraps it up. I do want to say thank you again for coming in with your presentation. Thank you for your vision on this new center. It's exciting times for CBU and for the island. And thank you for recognizing education, that sector, as an economic driver in our province and in our, on our island. It's important for us to remember that. So appreciate your time, thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Council. You got all this?
Yep.
Hit the red button.
All right, so I think our next report or presentation is from the Returning Officer for the 2020 municipal and CSAP election. So, welcome, Claire Rankin. Thank you for coming tonight to present this information. It's much appreciated. Is it the same?
Red.
Red, there you go.
She's going to let you in.
There you go. You're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Warden, and let me tell you, it's a pleasure to be here in front of all the successful candidates. I'd like to congratulate all the councillors around the table. Having served three terms myself, I hope that you understand the weight of the new responsibilities you have taken upon your shoulders by virtue of your successful campaigns, but also the enormous learning curve that you're about to partake in. There were few moments when I wasn't enriching my own knowledge base through meetings, presentations like you just had, or through the constituents' comments or questions, all to make better-informed decisions for the people of Richmond County. And the people of Richmond County sure love elections, eh? The election was like no other in the history of Richmond County, and probably indeed the world, to hold an election during a pandemic out of the new layer of preparation in order to ensure that both the voter and the election staff remain safe. With no new COVID cases coming out of Richmond County since the election, one could say that our part of the election planning was a success. But there were new protocols to follow. As you know, there was an additional staff member added at the door of every poll to sanitize the voters as they arrived. The gift of a golf pencil, which would be only used by each individual voter, was another procedure, and the in-one-door, out-the-other practice in each poll also kept social distancing protocols in place. Although it did upset some people because there is a old tradition that you have to leave the same door you come in, that people weren't used to that, some of them. Other venues from the past included breaking up the polls into different venues. For instance, there used to be three polls in Lusdale Lines Hall, we only put two in there this time. There was another, in Lordways, there were three polls last time, we broke that up this time to allow fewer people in the hall. We also had to make distinct lines for voters where the polls did share a hall, and only allowing so many voters in the poll where social distancing could be maintained. We were very lucky, both in the Vance Poll days and Election Day, that we had good weather, because it could have been quite a different story if people had to stay out in the rain because they weren't allowed in to crowd in the hall. The county employed approximately a hundred and ten people during the election. These were deputy Returning Officers, polling clerks, constables, and rovers. The municipality is to be thanked for raising the pay of these people from the two thousand and eight standards, which meant that people were paid an average of fifteen dollars an hour for this, for their time served. And it's a long day, it's a twelve-hour day for the staff, they have to arrive around seven-thirty to set their polls up. And even though the polls close at seven, they have to stay and break open the boxes and count every ballot and make sure everything balances before they're allowed to leave, before anybody's allowed to leave the hall, the poll. There were horror stories from the federal election that some people had worked there that didn't get out till midnight because they couldn't align the ballots with the people had voted. So we were lucky that, I think, the latest one that we had was the Vance Polls, because they had, we had quite a turnout at the Vance Polls, we had over five hundred in the two days in St. Peters, and had over six hundred here in Erishead. So it was quite a start to a real positive election, I think. Well, I'm sure you guys would agree. Whereas the COVID pandemic ruled out door-to-door enumeration, the province came through and supplied the lists from the two thousand seventeen provincial election. And while the benefit of having prepared lists eliminated the task of transferring the enumerators' lists into voters' lists, the use of these lists that were three years old did come with some discrepancies, as you all are aware. Richmond residents who had passed away since two thousand seventeen were on the list, residents who had moved away since two thousand seventeen were on the list, and conversely, new residences, residents to Richmond County, had to be added in droves in order to be able to vote. Even one of the candidates found out that they weren't on the voters' list. We added approximately three hundred people to the voters' list on Election Day, and almost the same number through you and your competitors' efforts out there going door-to-door or hearing from people who weren't on the list. Thus, the lists we have now are somewhat inflated, with the only additions being made during the election cycle, with few deletions taking place. So when I report on the voting percentages, please take this anomaly into consideration. Overall, there were seven thousand nine hundred and ten registered voters on Election Day in Richmond County, with five thousand thirty votes cast, for an overall participation rate of sixty-four percent, a very positive rate and one that we should all be proud of in Richmond County. We had a Returning Officer Zoom meeting today with the provincial people, and Port Hoxbury had the highest percentage turnout in the province, at seventy-seven percent. Now, they had a hybrid election, you could vote online or you could vote in person. And they only had one poll at the civic center, lots of parking, big building, everybody knew where it was, so, and it's a town, it's a small, you know, smaller, and they're not spread out from point upper to force you. So anyway, the individual districts and each individual results, District One, we had fifteen hundred and ninety-nine eligible voters with a thousand eighty-nine votes cast for a participation rate of sixty-eight percent. District Two, we had twelve hundred and sixty-five voters, eight hundred and fifty-three votes cast for sixty-seven percent. District Three, we had sixteen hundred and twenty-eight eligible voters with one thousand one hundred and twelve votes cast for sixty-eight percent. District Four, seventeen, seventy-nine eligible voters and eleven thousand fifty-four voters' votes cast for sixty-five percent. And District Five, we had fifteen hundred and eighty-three eligible voters and eight hundred and twenty-one votes cast for a participation rate of fifty-two percent. That number is a little skewed in that there was one poll that had almost four hundred voters eligible, but only sixty-eight voters cast a ballot, for a participation rate in that poll of seventeen percent. So if they're removed from the rest of the additions, it goes up to sixty-five percent. So it's a bit of standout. In conclusion, and you're going to hear that again in four years, "In conclusion," and then somebody goes out for hours and hours. In conclusion, I noticed that the ten-year review of the electoral boundaries, as mandated by the Nova Scotia Utilities Review Board, the URB, is due just past your four-year term here. Some, your first four-year term, I should say. If you have time to prepare for the review during this mandate, may I point out what I believe are two glaring errors in the district mapping? Number one is Tiverville. It's home to only four residences, but they are in District Three. The line between District Three and Four should be moved slightly west, it has to be moved like four hundred feet to include all these four homes. Even to vote, they were forced to drive into River Bujwa, cross the one oh, no, to cross the one oh four, drive down the River Bujwa, take number four, all the way to Grand Ants Hall to vote, and then all the way back home, surely the longest commute any voter had in this election. The other one that is an anomaly, it stands out, is the people who live along Grand Grab Road, and may wonder who drew the boundary line between Districts Four and Five, as it's just a straight line on a piece of paper, that doesn't make any common sense. The boundary simply cuts the road in two, whereas if you live in the first kilometer of the road, you're in District Four. As soon as you cross this imaginary line, you're in District Five. Now, imagine if the waste collector doesn't show up. The first people will call District Four councillor and say, "What happened? He's not here." And the rest of the road will call District Five and say, "Hey, you know, the waste guy didn't show up today." I mean, it really isn't, it really isn't following any sense at all. And another, another example arose this fall, whereas the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal was mandated to do the, clean the ditches in District Four, and that's what they did. They drove down the road, they cleaned the ditches, and when they got to District Five, they stopped, packed up, and went away. So it doesn't make any sense to, and the people, they're really mad, you know? Now the water stops at District Four and spills over into District Five. So there's something else for you to consider looking at. And URB does look at, you know, inconsistencies like this quite regularly and quite favorable, if you can make the case for them. So in conclusion, in closing, I'd like to thank the staff here at the Municipal Office for their support and help through all of this, especially Dawn, and Yvonne, Carla, Jason, Clint, Anna, and Christina. Also, the election staff, who were the backbone of the entire electoral process, who, in the midst of a global healthcare pandemic and emergency, performed proficiently and friendly, as we in Richmond County have been known to do well, echoing on President Dingwall's remarks. So thank you very much, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Claire. Any questions, comments from councillors? Sean, could you just press your? Thank you. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you on my behalf for everything you've done for us as candidates right from the election, so thank you.
It was my job, as they say.
Any other comments? councillor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you very much for all your work. I'm glad somebody else was noticing some of these strange anomalies, I'm sure District Four noticed them as well. I got phone calls about that roadwork that stopped at the end of District Four. But even one more spot would be the Salmon River Road, where there's a section of it falls into District Four, there's no houses on it, like in that section. For whatever reason, the way the lawn is, line is drawn, there is one small area that falls under District Four, but there's no one, no one living there in that area. no one, no one living there in that area.
It goes back to about six years, Mr. CAO, when the URB came down, and the big argument around the table and in the community then was to go from 10 to some other number. And myself and most of the other people who presented were more concerned with the number, and nobody looked at the map, the maps, because that would have stood out like a sore thumb. You know, in the past, the line between the old District 8 and 9 was Flaherty Brook. It was a physical, you know, geographical location. Same with the line between District 8 and District 7 was Pringle's Mountain Stream. You know, I mean, this is, we're going back old days, like, you know, you turn left by the oak tree that's not there anymore, you know? But those streams are still there. And although it was mostly done by the consultancy who provided the report, and it was all done to do rep by pop. I mean, you look at District 2, for example, Lennox Passage up to the, up to the crossroads is included in District 2. People went to vote and wouldn't vote. We had people who left the hall because they said, "I live in Lennox Passage, but I don't want to be a vote for somebody in Lewesdale. That's my community of choice." But because District 2 needed numbers, they included them in Lennox Passage. So it's all something to be reviewed if you have time.
Certainly, certainly. I thank you for bringing those issues to our attention. I think it's important to know if we certainly, as you mentioned, Counselor Sampson, experienced that when we were on the campaign trail, and certainly food for thought going forward and hopefully food for thought before the review, just after our current mandate. Thank you for that reminder.
Well, if you're here for a second or third term, it'll land in your desk.
All right. Thank you very much, Claire.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we will move on then to the next piece of our agenda, which is to, I guess, under my name, is the addition of Question Period back to our regular meetings. So I'd like to, you know, my thought process here was that we reopen a regular Question Period to allow the public to ask questions of us. You know, obviously with the pandemic, it's, you know, that logistically complicated potentially, but we did want to put that on the table, and I'd like to hear any kind of discussion on that. Any thoughts? Okay, good. So any thoughts on that from any councilors? Okay, I'm not sure.
Yeah, for me, for me, as a resident, you know, attending these meetings the last couple of terms, I was never a fan of getting rid of Question Period. I ran my campaign on openness and transparency and more public input and consultation and engaging in our residents. So for me to have people here on a regular basis and you see them at every meeting, if they have a question of council, they should have every right to ask that question and for us to answer it if we can at the time, right? So I would welcome back Question Period for sure.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. I'm just, I'm just pressed somebody at number five. Yes.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I guess, follow in Sean's footsteps with the recommendation that we do, and I'm glad you're asking to bring back Question Period. I think it's important. I think it's great to allow the people the time to speak. I believe we have to, I guess, proceed with caution, like you say, in this pandemic time, but again, maybe let everybody know that our emails are accessible. So if they do have a question that they don't think they can come in, they can definitely email any one of us that's on the website, and we can bring their question to council and possibly answer it for them.
That's a great point. Okay, Counselor Sampson?
I would echo the sentiments of Counselor Sampson and Counselor Diggden. I also support the return of Question Period to council. I think we want to be cautious with our time as well. We want to, we want to ensure that people are asking questions as opposed to using the forum as an, as an opportunity to present a position, for lack of a better, for lack of a better description. So I certainly support that. I definitely want to hear from residents of Richmond County and, as Counselor Diggden mentioned, you know, through more informal ways, not necessarily in council chambers, folks are welcome and encouraged to do that. But I do think, I think that it requires perhaps further discussion amongst the council in terms of what Question Period could look like when we are able to welcome the public back to chambers.
Okay, that's a great point. And I think the parameters around, you're referring to like maybe length of time, that type of thing. Yeah. Okay. So at this point then, are there any thoughts on what the parameters might look like for the return of Question Period? Length of time, that kind of thing? Or maybe actually, Dawn, are you able to provide us, it was a 15-minute Question Period in the past? Yes, okay. So, yeah. Any thoughts on length of time? Go ahead.
I think the, I mean, honestly, the 15-minute was suitable. I think we have to have respect for somebody who may have traveled. One, I've been here many times, and one person can use up 15 minutes pretty fast. I know it's not fair, but we have to, I guess, kind of get to the point of the question and give the answers probably as, as quick as possible. Maybe instead of lingering on the question, just point for point. And if we don't know the answer right to the, like Mr. Sampson said, if we don't know the answer right to the bullet, then let's, let's find out and get back to them. Because it's unfair for somebody who's traveled a long distance to wait 15 minutes and then Question Period be shut down. I think we need a little bit of leniency there.
Okay. I'm not sure who's...
So I've heard from some residents that perhaps in the past, and perhaps our CAO can help me out here, in the past, had we at some points asked residents to submit their questions prior to having the air, having the space to have those conversations here in chambers, or no? Were they...
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
So I'm not aware of that process, whether or not that happened recently or many years ago. I don't recall. Questions, ask that Question Period or should be very simple, quick, and move on to the next one.
I would agree. Okay, so I mean, I think that that may be something that we should consider, and not that they need to submit them prior to the meeting, because obviously questions come up as we go through our business of the meeting. So I certainly am not proposing that, but, but that, but that perhaps they're partially vetted before they just get to the mic. Again, just that the question is, is a question, as opposed to, as Counselor Diggden has mentioned, you know, a 10-minute presentation that's not under the presentation section followed by a question. And so perhaps we need to consider something that looks like that. Again, I wouldn't want to, I don't want to negatively impact people's ability to speak, but I also absolutely agree with Counselor Diggden. We need to respect the time of everyone. We should be able to fit in three or more questions in a 15-minute Question Period. So we have to figure out a way to make that be possible. And sometimes that's going to mean that we get back to people with their questions, with the answers to the questions, because perhaps we don't know those. If it's not something that's on the agenda in that evening, we probably are not, you know, fully up to speed on whatever it is. Anyway, just my thoughts.
Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the sentiments of Deputy Warden Diggden as well, just because I know my boundary line, it'd be about a half an hour from here. So anybody, let's say, coming from my district would be traveling quite a distance. It could be well over an hour. So maybe having a bit of flexibility in the sense that if I had somebody, you know, coming from Framboise, for instance, with a question, that I really wouldn't want to see them have to travel back home without being given the opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you for your comments on that. I guess for our next step, would you like to continue this discussion, or do you feel like we're at a point where we could make a decision or a recommendation on that tonight to take to council next month? Counselor Diggden?
I think at this point, it sounds like everybody's under the same scenario or, I guess, idea. I think I'd like to make a motion to, to, I guess, bring back the 15-minute Question Period for now, with the possibility of an extension if required on a night-for-night basis, I guess is the best way to...
Okay. Okay, so could I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So the motion on the table is to reinstate the 15-minute Question Period, but it's on a case-by-case basis to allow leniency if, if the need is there. So any further discussion on that? Okay, so hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And all those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, councilors. Next on our agenda is approval of the committee structure. So after much back and forth over the last number of days or week or so, we've come to, I think, a point where we can establish our committee structure and ensure that councilors are, you know, part of the discussions of committees that are, where councilors are representing us at that, at those various tables. So Dawn, do we have a, do we need to, do people have a copy of this and everybody's? Yep. Okay, so great. So that committee list is in the, in the database. Yes, thank you, Yvonne. I see it there now. So I guess we will entertain a motion to approve that committee structure as presented. Okay, Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that committee structure.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
I will second the motion to approve the committee structure.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. So the motion is to approve the committee structure as presented, and if there's no further discussion, any discussion on that? Sorry, Counselor Diggden, go ahead.
Question, is, looking at my screen, I don't know if it's different than everybody else's, but it doesn't show me the list of the committees.
Yeah, so...
It shows me the list of all committees. It just doesn't show the list of the, any committees that you're on.
Yeah, that's right. In the next thing.
Yeah.
On the committee appointments, on the next line. See?
Okay. It's the, it's the DOC file, right? And so, and I would like to mention that those committee appointments will be published on the Richmond County website after council meeting, because, just so the public will have access to that information. So Counselor Sampson, did you have another question?
Yeah, just, just wanted to comment that there were a couple of committees that were on the original list that we've agreed to remove. And so particularly, I'm thinking about Richmond County Literacy Network and the Beeta Bog Committee. And so we've been requested by both of those committees to pop in on a, on a casual basis, for lack of a better term. And so I guess I wanted to clarify that, that although we haven't appointed a council member to that, to those two committees, that we've, you know, through those conversations, we've committed to, you know, keeping, keeping informed in terms of the workings of their committees and popping in as, as we're able.
Definitely. I would add the Eastern Counties Regional Library to that, as, that list as well. So it's, you know, it's certainly not demonstrative of a lack of interest. It's just absolutely a time management exercise. And I would suggest that there'd be an open invitation to any committee to come and present to council so we're all informed. That's, that's something I think we, we could agree on. So I think we have a motion then to approve those committee appointments. So any further discussion? No? Okay, so I'll call for the question then. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and those opposed? Raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carried. Oh, sorry. You want to do it in two motions? Okay, all right. So we've got, the motion then to approve the appointments is there. We might have done this a little backwards, but we're doing this in two pieces instead of one. So we'll also need a motion to approve the committee structure as presented as well. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee structure as presented to us.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Diggden. So any further discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. See, we got it done. It's good. All right, so we're moving on. So next item on the agenda are food banks. And so Richmond County has in the past supported financially food banks in the county. Christmas is coming up. This tends to be the time of year where that, that action would take place. So I'd like to, I guess, open the, open this for discussion to members of council, your thoughts on this matter. Yeah, so any thoughts, comments? Okay, go ahead.
So just wanted to give you guys a little bit of history on that to begin with. So in the previous budget, or in the current budget that we're in now, council did a lot, $10,000 for food banks. Traditionally, we would split the food bank allocation amongst five food banks. Last year, it was done by district. And each councilor took that $2,000 and split it amongst the food banks in their, in their location, their district. So either way, you got, you folks can do it either way. You can, you can allocate the $10,000, because that's what's budgeted right now, and allocate it whichever way you choose.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Any comments?
So if my memory serves me correctly, last year, there was a discrepancy when it came to your area, Brent, as the food bank, there was a food bank that had no address associated to it. So it wasn't looked at as being an option for funding, correct?
Go ahead.
There were five food banks. And there were five districts, but two food banks were, were in one district and one food bank was in two districts. So District 1 and 2, Almedam has one food bank. District 5 has two food banks. So that was the, that was basically the dilemma.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Sampson?
So, yeah, last year, I guess how it played out from what I viewed on the meetings and so on, the money for District 1 and 2 went to the food bank in Almedam, and District 3, the money went there, and District 4, the money went to the one in St. Peters. And anyway, District 5 ended up splitting the 2,000 between the two of them. I think the biggest issue with that was it probably felt like it was kind of last minute, and it wasn't necessarily what had been done in the past. Mind you, I understand the, obviously, the food bank in Almedam is covering a greater number of people, and so it's something that's got to be taken into consideration. The thought I had, but it's a big ask of everybody, I guess, was that possibly if each Districts 1 through 4 would be able to forego 250 of the 2,000, it would allow for my district to end up getting 1,500 to Lordways and 1,500 to Budla Deck, as opposed to 1,000 each. And it would, it would make a great impact there, I think, without a huge cut to the other districts. However, I know nobody likes taking a cut. I understand that. I'm open to discussion on that.
Any comments on Counselor Sampson's proposal? Go ahead, Counselor Diggden.
I just have one. Do we have any numbers, I guess, to litigate or figure out how many people are, use each food bank? Do you know, if there's a, I guess, a numbering system, like how many uses the Almedam, how many uses the Lewesale? Is there any numbers from, is there any feedback, I guess, from anybody running the...
Well, we did get some numbers from the food banks. I don't recall... Well, we did get some numbers from the food banks. I don't recall what those numbers actually were. However, they didn't, they didn't, I don't think they based their decision on the number of people that were going to the food banks, because they made their decision on district.
Councilor Sampson?
So, in anticipation of this agenda item, I actually spoke to the food bank coordinator in my district. And so, based on the conversation that I had with her, I would be agreeable to District, you know, to District Five, his proposal that we all share, two fifty, that was something that she mentioned, that we've been very lucky in our district to not, to not have a lot of people who require the services of the food bank. I would say at this late date, I, similar to Deputy Warden Diggden, would like to find out more from all of the food banks, similar information, how much money they have already put aside, how many people they serve on a regular basis. I also wanted to touch out to other areas in my own district that, from what I understand, don't have a food bank, but maybe they should, and where they're served. So, I think, I think for today, we need to make a decision that perhaps is not how we would do it going forward, but that we make a commitment to gather more information, so that next year at this time, when we're making a similar decision, we can use some of that information. So, that's a long story to get to the point where I say, I am, you know, if we decide to divide by district, I'm fine with seventeen fifty for my district, if the other members of council are fine with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I just have, I don't know, I find it hard to believe that we're sitting around the table, and I'm definitely okay with giving money over to the other district. It just bothers me that we're cutting costs when it comes to a food bank. Obviously, the people who have to go to that food bank are in dire straits. And the county of Richmond, when I knocked on everybody's door, was here for the benefit of the people. I don't know if the budget allows it. I know, obviously, it's been almost set in stone, but there must be some leeway that we can, I don't know, I guess, check with our CEO or CFO to see if we can go back to, I guess, if it was a two thousand dollar limit per food bank, then I see no need why we can't go. Or if we haven't been there, then I see no need why we can't go to a two thousand dollar limit per food bank, if that's an option available. If not, then I see, I have no problem supporting Brent's recommendation as well. I just feel that we're taking food from people who actually are looking for food. I have a problem with that.
Okay, any other comments? Well, thank, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I understand what Deputy Warden Diggden is saying, and maybe if it is possible for us to keep this in the back of our minds and take this into consideration, especially for the budget year next year. We're kind of walking into a situation where things were set up prior to us being here. So, I was just looking at it to try and make the best of the situation at this point, but as well as what Councilor Sampson said, the more information we have, the better we can do going forward likely.
Okay, Councilor Sampson?
Yeah, for me, I mean, I ran my campaign on what's good for my district is good for Richmond County, and what's good for Richmond County is good for all districts. So, I would have no problem, Brent, sharing my two hundred and fifty and making sure that everybody's taking care of rates. I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, and I think to Deputy Warden Diggden's point about making cuts, especially during a time of pandemic, you know, I guess the concern that I've heard expressed is that if we don't make a recommendation this evening, that we will not have the time available to us before Christmas to execute any decision. So, that's the unfortunate situation that we are in. And at the same time, maybe there's some more thinking that we need to be doing on this, to your point, Deputy Warden.
So, I also will definitely support Brent's intent to balance it throughout. I would like to, yeah, I guess have it noted or be noted that that is one thing that we definitely work on, is to increase the budget or increase the amount that's going to the food banks.
Okay. Okay, Yvonne, if you could make that note, that would be much appreciated. Oh, I have another comment, so, sorry, go ahead, Melanie.
I'm actually ready to make the motion.
Okay, yes.
So, I would move that the funds, that the ten thousand dollar budget for food bank be distributed as follows. Districts One through Four, seventeen fifty each, and District Five, three thousand. Someone should check my math.
That's right. It's correct. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Diggden. So, any other further discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the question on that. All those in favor? Thank you, and those opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, councilors. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is training for council and staff. So, we've received, and thank you to Dawn and Yvonne for providing us with hours of your time last Monday evening. It is a learning curve for all of us, so we have received some training from staff on sort of the municipal operations and the council operations here. We have, though, been approached by several organizations, and I think it would be who of us as council to take advantage of an opportunity similar to what's happening in other municipalities, related to training from agencies, boards, that, especially in particular, that the county invests in. Entities like the Cape Butten Partnership or Regional Enterprise Network, Eastern District Planning Commission, Placing Services, as well as internal training on municipal financing, you know, fire services and EMO, and public works, properties, potentially recreation. So, these were the kinds of things that I think we have all identified as a learning curve for us, that we all need to be brought up to speed as quickly as possible so that we can be the most effective council possible for the residents of Richmond County. I'd like to open that for discussion, though. I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that. Okay, Councilor Sampson?
As mentioned by everyone, since our time of election, obviously, we have a lot to learn. And I think that anything that council is able to do to bring us up to speed as quickly as possible, we should do. And I am thankful for all of those agencies who have reached out with offers of training for us, and I would propose that we should take them up on their offers, recognizing, of course, we always have an opportunity for people to make presentations to hear, to us here in council. But if we only have a couple of presentations a month, every month, it will take us a long time to get caught up. So, I would support that for sure.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I agree. That's a, honestly, it's a great, it's a great gesture, and I believe the last thing we can do is miss out on it. Anybody who's willing to donate their time or give their time up to teach us or train us, to bring us to where we have to be, and, you know, keep us in the loop, keep us informed, then I believe, yes, we should jump on, you know, every occasion we have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? Okay, and I know in our last training session with staff, we talked specifically about the Cape Butten Regional Enterprise Network and Eastern District Planning Commission. So, they have agreed to provide that type of training at our convenience. And I know we're working on a date where we can, where we can exact that. And so, I guess I would look to, look to staff to help us fill in the blanks, particularly on the internal, the internal training, that budgetary piece, fire services, or sorry, not budgetary, but finance in general, as it relates to the municipality, fire services, NEMO, as well as public works and recreation. So, I don't know that we need a motion to that effect. It's a plan for training, but, what's yours? No, I don't, I don't think we need a motion to that effect, but we'll proceed as it's in the best interest of, I think, our residents and communities to be up to speed as quickly as possible. So, okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for that. So, proceeding to the next items on our agenda, Councilor Sampson regarding, that would be Councilor Melanie Sampson, regarding strategic priorities. We did note that we may have to include first names in our agendas, so. So, strategic priorities, please proceed. Thank you.
So many Sampsons, so little other names. So, of course, as Warden Mumberkett mentioned, we did have some training here last week, and part of that conversation is about the work that we'll need to embark upon in the new year in regards to budgeting. And as any organization is familiar with budgeting, first comes strategic planning. So, we are, of course, very tight for time, so the idea of a formalized strategic planning session is probably not realistic. However, we are a new council, and we have our thoughts in terms of individually and collectively, I suspect, in terms of things that we want to see happen in the county in the next fiscal year. So, my proposal is that we set aside some time prior to the end of this calendar year, where council can gather simply to discuss those strategic decision items, so that we can instruct staff to, you know, cost those out and give us some options in terms of how those could be incorporated into our 2021, 2022 budget.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Sampson. Any comments or questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Melanie's comments for sure. I mean, if we got some vision for the county, and we have to allocate some funding for those visions, it would be nice to have those conversations first and make sure that there is room in the budget before the budget is decided, and there's nothing left for some of our plans for the future of Richmond County. So, I agree with Melanie for sure on that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right. I guess what I would maybe look to staff, or is the opportunity to potentially even have that session be potentially facilitated. You know, we don't want to, we want to make sure we're operating within the rules and regulations of the Municipal Government Act in doing so, but we will need, we will need to have those conversations in advance. So, perhaps we can, you know, work with you to create a plan to make sure that that happens. And, yeah, any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
I just have one, and, you know, I guess, knocking on everybody's door before I sat in this seat, one of them was, you're going to see new council move in a new direction. So, I know it's against the MG to, I guess, pre-plan a meeting. I just want to let the citizens know, or the, I guess, the constituents know, we won't be pre-planning any meetings, but they will see many councilors out and about, whether it be at luncheons, whether it be at breakfasts, whatever it may be. And we will be discussing things in our community, because that's what we're here for. Obviously, one day every two weeks, sitting around the table on a Monday, isn't going to cut it, and for us to catch up to speed, we will have to have discussions. We won't, obviously, we won't break the rules, but it will definitely get us a jumpstart. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that's either watching tonight or concerned that we may be doing something that we shouldn't be doing, or not. We're doing it out, you know, like I said, it's going to be straight out, straightforward, no hidden agendas, and that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Sampson?
Yes, and I'm not sure in terms of, you know, the way municipal strategic planning would typically progress. I know that when the strategic plan was created years ago, there was, you know, public consultation and all of those pieces. And again, we are tight for time, so I don't think that we can expect that that can be possible. But I also think that we should be open to the potential that it would be an open meeting, at least, where it would be recorded, because I think it is important for residents to see the thoughts that we have inside of our heads, you know, what we're thinking of. Doesn't mean we're going to be able to do them all, because they may be cost prohibitive, but for us to potentially have that as an option would be something I would definitely support.
Okay. All right. So, it's a mechanism that we could potentially be using, a special meeting for that type of a? Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I'm not sure, again, that we need a motion to that effect at this point, but it's just to put that on the radar and on the, for future planning, and call that special meeting as necessary. Budgetary discussions at staff level starts in January, so I guess we would be on a pretty tight turnaround for that. And also, you know, to your point, not precluding future strategic planning, full processes as such. So, okay. So, next item on the agenda is fire protection in Richmond County. Councilor Sampson?
Thank you, Warden Mumberkett. I just wanted to basically open the conversation. So, we do have a fire services committee, and so, in recognition that we have, we have a report that we need to be briefed through, that we have a new emergency services coordinator, I guess I would just like to get it on our schedule, that we would be briefed on that by the emergency services coordinator, and that we would just begin to think about what our options look like in terms of fire service, because if our, if we have a contract, from what I understand, and not to discuss contractual issues, of course, but with Luzdale Fire Department, that, from what I understand, expires at the end of March. So, we want to make sure we do some pre-planning in terms of where do we go, not even necessarily just about the point-topper fire services, but fire services, I think, in general. So, again, not necessarily something that I think requires a motion, I think, just that we would acknowledge that this is something that we need to start to work on sooner than later, so that we're prepared for April one. And our budget, of course.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from council? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
I only have one short one on that. In retrospect to the fire safety, and I'm sure everybody's been getting a call from the town of Port Hoxbury, and, you know, just to let them know that we, I guess, we sit around this table tonight, being our first night. So, again, just to reiterate what Melanie said, I think it is important that we get the figures and facts and budgets and the information in front of us before we come to any sort of agreement or disagreement. So, yeah, it's, I think it's important that we look at that probably as soon as possible. That should be, and it might be, might be important to make a motion to get the, I guess, the facts on the fire services brought up as soon as possible, so that we can look at it before the, I guess, April budget.
No. So, you're suggesting just a request potentially for a staff report?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. If we could make a note of that, that would be, that would be helpful. Councilor Sampson?
And I guess, in terms of the fire, and again, pardon me, I don't remember the exact term that we call it, Fire Services Committee or whatever it is. Who leads that committee? And so, do we, do we have any authority to, for lack of a better, to direct that committee to meet within a certain period of time? And I think that's probably a question for...
So, that committee was involving fire chiefs, councilors, and a fire services coordinator that we had. And they met, I'm not exactly sure how often they met, I think it was monthly. And to what extent do I know what they discussed? I don't know. I don't know what they were discussing. It, I don't think it was a committee of council. We had basically two, was it a committee of council? No, I don't think it was. Public councilors that sat on it, they just discussed, I guess, fire department issues.
Okay.
Okay, so given that, I would say then we would not have authority to direct the committee to meet at a certain point, based on what I'm hearing. So, I think, yes, certainly a, maybe a report from staff would do the trick, at least, to get the ball rolling, for sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments on that matter? All right, um so hearing none, I think we'll move on uh to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence. So um the first letter or piece of correspondence is a request from the Bedore Lakes Biosphere to uh provide a letter of support. And I believe councillors have had an opportunity to review um review that information, so I'll open, I'll open the floor to comments uh discussion. Quiet room on this one, okay. All right. Um so this uh, the Bedore Lakes Biosphere Reserve Association is um seeking a letter of support to uh to renew their UNESCO designation as a bi- biosphere. And so we received, I think, a letter um would have been some time ago, potentially even pre-election, um and then a reminder um from uh from representatives of the Biosphere Association that um that they are pursuing this recertification. Um so every 10 years, uh they they do this review um of the kind of functioning zoning um and the scale of the reserve, um as well as kind of, you know, they try to do community consultation related to that as well. And it basically gives them an opportunity to kind of do a bit of a survey of how effective they've been. And so I'm not sure, so at this point, they are requesting a letter of support to, you know, to renew their certification. Um I believe, Dawn, we have in the past provided. Have we have we done that? Do you, would you recall if we've provided a letter of support in the past?
Uh, just to this organization? I thought we did, however, I can I can check back on our notes to see if we did.
Okay, okay. All right, um councillor Sampson?
I I, when I read through the material and perhaps I missed it, did they have a deadline on when they needed to have this letter of support? Uh I'm 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 inclined to want to hear from them in terms of a presentation.
Okay. I know the original deadline was before September 30th, 2020. So we've missed that, um and I, you know, when you're in the middle of an election, it's pretty tough to be pretty tough to be dealing with that. So um councillor Sampson, you had some comments?
I was kind of of the same mind as councillor Melanie Sampson. Um without sort of being able to ask them some questions and so on, that I'd just be possibly like, I likely would support it, but possibly a little uncomfortable without feeling like we have all the information in front of us to just send out a letter.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so am I hearing then that we would request that the Bedore Lakes Biosphere Reserve Association come in to provide a presentation to council on uh on their activities and a little bit of history on their organization, so that we can better understand what it is they need from us? Um and also, if uh Dawn, you could find out if we have provided a letter of support in the past, if that is something that we have on record, that might be helpful, if that's the wishes of council? Okay, well, thank you very much. Um so the next item on our agenda then um is regarding the Royal Canadian Legion, uh branch 43 from Port Hoxbury, Nova Scotia, regarding the support for, I believe it was the Poppy Fund. It's cut cut off in my uh in my list here, but um essentially, um having uh spoken with um Dawn prior to this meeting to get some background information, um this essentially has been taken care of because what happens uh each year is that the legions will invoice us for the laying of a wreath um at the various uh cenotaphs or memorial ceremonies uh throughout the county. Um so since this request came in, I believe you said another has as well. Um so uh with the permission of council, maybe we'll consider this matter resolved because it is something that we've done in the past. And I think would behoove us to continue to support those, those uh or to pay those invoices as received. Uh councillor Sampson?
I would just ask, have we received invoices already for from some of the legion? Okay. Just because where they're not having um events due to COVID-19, I didn't know if they would, because we're technically not laying wreaths unless I think, are we doing them prior to Remembrance Day or in a private ceremony? I'm just not sure. So as long as we're confirmed that we're doing it, sounds fine to me.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just so everyone's aware too, um the the Poppy Fund is is actually a fund uh separate from any general revenues that's used solely to help out veterans and or their families in times of need. Uh it could be used for several different things, but it's never something that's in the general revenue of the organization. So so those donations do go directly to veterans and their families.
Thank you for that clarification, councillor Sampson. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda, which uh the next several items, actually um regarding the St Anne's Centre board appointment and uh Conseil de Développement Economic de la Nouvelle Lacasse. The board appointment there essentially has been taken care of by our prior approval of the committee structure. Um so unless there's questions or comments on that for on those letters further, I think we can. Okay, okay, so I'm being advised that potentially we should get a motion for each one of those because it has been sent to the organizations that we would be doing that, so um let me just go back. So specific to the councillor representing? Okay. So I'll ask everyone to bear with me while I opened, open back up my our committee structure information. Okay. So I think we've, pardon me? Yes. So um regards to the first one, the St Anne's Centre board appointment, um the suggestion was, I'm so glad there's a first initial there, was that councillor M Sampson uh would uh be the council's appointed uh councillor to sit on that board, so if I could have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion that councillor Melanie Sampson sit on the St Anne's board.
Thank you, Brent. Uh could I have a second or for that motion? Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is that uh councillor Melanie Sampson would sit on the board of the St Anne's Centre as a representative of Richmond County Council, so any further discussion on that? Okay, so all those in favor? Thank you, and all opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Um regarding uh the Cede Urne, um the board appointment there was to have councillor Sean Sampson sit on the board of that organization as representative of Richmond County Council. Could I have a motion to that effect? Go ahead.
I make a motion that Sean Sampson sit on that board.
Thank you, deputy warden. Could I have a second or?
I second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sampson. So any further discussion? Okay. So I'll call for the question on that. Thank you. Um so all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to uh correspondence from the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition regarding uh again, committee appointment there. Um so this is a committee that hasn't had wasn't part of our original, I guess, committee structure from four years back. And so they are also seeking a member of council to sit on that committee. So are there any any questions, any discussion or any interest from councillors in participating on the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, nope, there it is. Okay, go ahead.
Do we have um, is there a copy of how often they meet? Or where they meet, or where? Or how many councils are needed? I'm just scrolling through, but.
Right now, um my, the information I have is that one councillor, um so uh former warden Brian Marshand attended those meetings in the past, and they were hoping that a new member, so singular, uh from this council would be able to become involved going forward. So the next meeting they have is scheduled for Monday, November 16th at 9:30 a.m. I believe, I I could be wrong, but I believe that committee might be chaired by Mayor Brendan Chisholm-Batton. I can't, I can't remember exactly. I know that the town of Port Hoxbury is involved um in that in that initiative as well. Councillor Sampson?
My understanding from the letter uh from the um housing coalition is that uh they would, they didn't necessarily need a person appointed to their a board, but but would rather be happy with uh someone up um attending when possible. It just said it, it would be great if someone could join us, even if it may not be the same person moving forward.
Right.
So that if someone from council could perhaps attend when they could attend.
Yeah.
And it seems like they're currently doing it by uh distance through Zoom.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Any other questions on this?
Because my feeling would be that we would just treat it the same way with the library, with the literacy, with Beadabah, like.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Well, that's great. Um so maybe in future then, um Yvonne, as a matter of correspondence, if uh we do get notice, as we get notice of these meetings, if you could forward it to all of us, that would be really helpful, and that way at least one or or maybe more of us, you know, especially in the beginning, may be able to attend. Okay, well, that's great. Thank you for that. So I don't think we need a motion to that effect, um if it's not a committee of council, so we're in good shape. Um. All right, um so next on our agenda is the review of checks issued from September and October 2020. So we've got two months uh there to review. Um and thank you to staff for providing that information in advance. It's much appreciated. Are there any questions regarding the presentation of checks? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we do a motion and that you do have, you know, it's just an informational piece, okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, and is there any context you'd like to provide then as well, or you're you're good? Yeah.
If you if you have any concerns or questions on the check, you can you can you can email me and I'll uh I'll get the information to you in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you so much, Dawn. Okay, so um next items are those added to the agenda. So I think there was, I'm sorry, I need a reminder on that first one. It was the Richmond Arena, so um if we could have discussion regarding the Richmond Arena, status update on that? Go ahead, deputy warden. Uh, sorry.
No.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I'm going to give an update?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Great, thank you.
So um the preliminary uh decision to postpone the arena opening for one month was uh was agreed to by the former council, and uh we set our sights on a uh on a November 1st opening. When the staff uh arrived at the arena to begin the process, they discovered that there was some mold that had developed on the stands approximately 10 feet off of the ground surface, so the arena staff were already in there uh preparing the ice and actually making ice, so. We then engaged a a firm to do uh testing on the on the mold, just to make sure that it was make sure what it was, whether or not it was safe or unsafe, and it came back that it was uh not a dangerous mold, but it would it would irritate anyone who had any kind of a breathing issue. Uh we proceeded to uh solicit quotes to get the uh the work done, and it was completed. Of course, that all takes time, so it it pushed the opening of the arena further further back, basically. And uh we 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 did get the results and uh the main arena is all clear. We just got the results today, actually. Um we didn't get the the formal results, we got a phone call. However, there were two areas that were still uh beyond the the limits. One was uh, one was a bathroom area, which we have cordoned off, and the other areas, the Zamboni Room, which we also have indicated to the staff that they wear their PPE to uh conduct uh their daily job duties in that area. We currently are in the process of getting the business that did the original cleaning back in to uh clean the bathrooms and the Zamboni Room. And it's my understanding that it's it's a very simple process and that there will not be a requirement to do any testing beyond that point. And once that's done, then we'll be completely open. I believe the o- the rink is open tomorrow for rentals, and uh we're ready to go, basically, uh with a couple extra days. I think uh we had initially said the night, which was obviously today, uh but it will be tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Dawn. Any comments or questions? Deputy warden?
So I just have one, and I was looking through the minutes of the last um council, and it was upon their recommendation that um that the arena be, I guess, um the opening of the arena be set by staff. So I guess the only concern I would have, or the question I would have would be, I guess, what led to the what led to the fact that the arena um was full of mold? And why did it, why did it take us so long to find out? Was the arena, I guess, shut down throughout the whole summer, or is there, I guess, is there provisions in place that this doesn't happen again? Is one of the questions I would have.
Yes.
Yes, do there are provisions in place, or?
Yes, there are provisions in place.
It was shut down for the whole summer, or?
Well, due to COVID, we 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 did have uh programming in the arena in the past, and uh of course, that was shut down because of COVID, so. I guess, had we known that mold would have developed because we were not frequenting the arena, then we would certainly have checked it. However, hindsight's a wonderful thing, but we didn't have it then. So it 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 happened once, I can assure you it won't happen again. The circumstances were probably, I guess, all the stars were aligned correctly, and that's what happened. So it was certainly something that was out of our control, and uh we expedited and we're at we're at the situation we're in now, and the arena will open tomorrow.
Thank you, Dawn, for that update. Um and just for my, just for my clarification, um I'm, I guess I'm wondering so the the arena will be open for rentals tomorrow, but there's no bathroom facilities on site, or or can be, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, no, they've just uh cordoned off that area. There are a couple of bathroom areas that are that are available, so there
Okay.
there definitely will be bathroom facilities available.
Okay. All right, thank you for that update. Any other questions from council? Go ahead, deputy warden.
Do we, Dawn, do we have a, um do we have an approximate cost of what um, I guess, what this episode cost us, or cost the people um for the cleanup, or for the, and I guess, I guess two questions. One, would we, do we have a cost of what what this, or an expense of what this is going to ta- cost us? And number two is um, do we have an estimate of the loss of revenue by not opening on time of, I guess, what we lost?
I would say that um we don't have the costs yet because we don't have, we haven't been invoiced. That's that's to answer your first question. The second question, um as you all know, the arena does not, is not a revenue, is not a uh a profit builder, it's 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 a liability, so uh in fact, by not opening on October 1st, we we it probably cost us uh less money at to get to this point right now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And forgive me, I don't remember which order I added these. And forgive me, I don't remember which, uh, order I added these in, I think it was the Tree for Boston. Um, so I do want to, uh, just take a minute, um, to say a very special thank you to Heather and Tony Sampson of West Bay. They have donated a splendid forty-five foot, uh, white spruce grown right here in Grand Dance as this year's Tree for Boston. Um, I just want to read a little bit of a, a few notes that I had written on it, um, because I think it's important to remember what the Tree for Boston means to Nova Scotia. Um, we've always had a special relationship to the New England area, with many family and economic ties between the two regions. But in nineteen seventeen, when Boston responded to the Halifax explosion disaster, the strength of that relationship was never more evident. This year, the tree has also been dedicated to frontline healthcare workers fighting to keep us safe from COVID nineteen. So it's just a little bit extra special this year. Particularly in such a challenging year, the Tree for Boston is a reminder of how people need to work together to look out for each other, and how important it is to pitch in when others need help. So I'd like to say a special thank you to Heather and Tony, um, for their contribution, uh, for the, to the Tree for Boston, um, and to thank you, thank you, Boston, for continuing to be a great partner. Okay, any other comments, any other councillors like to make, any comments on that? Go ahead, councillor Sampson?
Yeah, for me, it's, like you said, uh, Warden, it's a great tradition. It's been a great tradition for years now, and it's, you know, it's, it's a symbol of gratitude and remembrance of, of what Boston did for, for us in, in Nova Scotia during the Halifax explosion, so for me, I would like to see a letter of recognition or a, a letter of congratulations sent to the Sampsons, uh, because I think this is, this is a great, great, uh, situation for all of us, and, and, and great for Richmond County, so.
Absolutely, it's a great suggestion, thank you, uh, councillor Sampson, any other comments?
I, I would just like to reiterate what councillor Sampson said, that I think that would be a nice idea to send a letter of congratulations along for that, because it was, uh, like, the people of Richmond County could take great pride in, in knowing it came from here this year. It's always kind of a special moment every year, it's a little different this year, where celebrations, I guess, won't be the same due to COVID nineteen. However, uh, I think the people of Richmond County and, uh, can take pride in, in knowing that the, the tree came from here, and a big thank you to the people who donated it as well.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, so I think we have consensus to provide that letter, that's great, okay. Um, so then, next item on the agenda was related to live streaming our meetings, um, and I, you know, this suggestion and this, I guess, this, uh, idea would, is obviously going to be dependent on what happens with the pandemic situation. We're seeing our numbers on the rise, if it comes to a point where we can no longer meet in person, um, then we need to take that into account, and certainly it has been easy enough to stream Zoom meetings, uh, which is great. Um, but I think, you know, the value of having Tellil, um, record has been, um, you know, evident, uh, to, and certainly was missed when it was not present by many community members. Um, but I think, you know, while we're here in person, and it would also, you know, also be, um, I think in the spirit of our transparency and accountability in those discussions that we had, um, potentially a good idea to investigate that, um, as an option. Um, not one to replace the other, but an addition to. So I'd like to hear your thoughts from councillors on that, um, what potentially, you know, what you've been hearing from constituents on that, as I'm sure you, you probably have, any comments?
The way it's currently done with the three-camera setup, um, in my opinion, it provides a much better, uh, visual for the people at home. I don't know that it makes any difference whether it's broadcast tonight or tomorrow, only because I did get commentary from even the swearing-in, people say, oh, it was pretty dull, it was just focused on one part of the room, you know? Whereas normally the council meetings, as I'm speaking right now, uh, both of us will be shown, and, and if people from the other side of the room are speaking, they're shown, and, I think there's a better quality from that. The other thing I, I think could be a concern, I don't know if, uh, consulting with a lawyer would make any sense on that, because if, if, uh, there was ever an accidental situation where that was left on during an in-camera session, it can go right ninety-nine times out of a hundred, but if it goes wrong once, we could find ourselves in a, a big heap of trouble.
Great points, thank you councillor Sampson, any other comments? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would cer, I would certainly echo councillor Brent Sampson's comments as well. Uh, I, I fully support the idea of the livestream, I think I'd like more information before I would be prepared to vote on a, um, let's say, a motion that that's what we do. Uh, I think we need to, you know, consult with our friends at Tellil to find out, you know, if we could have multiple cameras in a live type of event, or what, I, I don't know, it's not my area of expertise, so I guess I would say we should perhaps talk to the experts in terms of what that could look like, and, and of course, we need to consider budgetary constraints as well when we look at all of those pieces, so. Uh, for me, I would, I would love the idea in principle, and I would love to hear more about it.
Great, any other comments?
Yeah, for me, I, I would, uh, I would recommend exactly what councillor Melanie Sampson said. Uh, we would consult with Tellal first to see where, you know, their opinions are at, and that what they feel is the best option for us, so. I would, uh, have the consultation with Tellal first, yeah.
Okay. Deputy Ward?
I guess last but not least, if, uh, if I wouldn't own, according to Brent's, uh, you know, description, that every time I talked, the camera was on me, I probably wouldn't have talked so much tonight, so. But in saying that, since I'm already here, um, I agree, it's, uh, you know, the people want to know, and for those who can't get out, and with the, you know, pandemic in place, um, everybody wants to know what's going on at council, so I believe it's in our best interest and in their best interest. I mean, all of our platform was to, uh, keep, you know, keep the county united and keep everybody informed, and we want their feedback as well, so. You know, I'm okay with, honestly, I'm gonna say that I'm okay with screwing up on TV or on Tellil or anything else, I'm fine with that. We're all gonna make mistakes, and, you know, we're all gonna be held accountable, so, um, let's put them out there and, you know, roll the dice.
So it sounds like we'd like to get a little bit more information then, um, so I guess, uh, could we ask staff to consult with Tellil to get some information on how that might be best done? Let's fi, figure out what our options are, um, costs associated, and of course, what resources would be required within, within the room as well, for that kind of thing, okay? Well, thank you very much, uh, councillors, I believe that concludes our, um, our public agenda for this evening. Um, we do have, um, an in-camera session ahead of us, so motion to, uh, proceed in camera would be appreciated.
I would move that we move into camera.
Okay, thanks, could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Sampson, councillors Sampson. The motion is on the floor to move in camera, so any other further discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the question on that, all in favor? Thank you, and those opposed, motion carried, thank you, everyone.